Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Adir.
Okay. We have a call. My contacts are acting funny, guys. Okay, item four. Discussion and action on a consent agenda. I ought to have this one memorized.
Sure.
All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of a regular meeting August 19th, 2024. B, approval of claims in the amount of $371,095.17 and payroll expenses of $240,720.20. And C, approval of ASAP energy invoice in the amount of $29,468.58. That's for airport fuel. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman and second by Dr. Lahr to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There's not a cleaning commission report, however, we have a cleaning commission item on our agenda. Hospital authority meeting on August 27th. Mr. Bowman.
Okay, Senior Life Solutions has hired an office coordinator and a therapist, so that's, they're getting staffed up, ready to go. Surgery, Dr. Tupper and Roberts are doing extremely well, being very busy, and they are also working together to try to make that more efficient. The nursing home sale, this meeting was 8:27. The paperwork Beatles submitted was about a week old, and they said 90 days, so that puts the final transaction in November. About what I'm thinking, and that's about it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bowman?
Do you know how we're doing on gift transfers out for the hospital from the city? Have you heard anything?
I haven't. If we can get a report, I have not, I have not seen. All right.
I'd say we're doing better. A lot better.
Item C is the Public Library Board Meeting on September 9th. Steve, do you have any thoughts on that?
I wasn't able to attend, it wasn't a little well, but it looks like the agenda, there wasn't anything other than routine business on the agenda. I know Angela Breed, her annual report that goes to Oklahoma Department of Library or what it's called, and they're stepping out of the order now after a quarter year.
Any questions regarding the library? Item D is the Alverian Authority Meeting on September 10th.
So that's changed. They changed it after we did this. The meeting is actually going to be tomorrow. They're going to have a special meeting.
Okay. All right. Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on August 21st. Mrs. Beer, would you like to give us a report?
They talked about, they met with the chamber board, and they're kind of going through their new processes with Jody and Megan being the new members, and they are going to be drafting up like a new MOU to reflect that change. So hopefully we'll have something coming back to tourism. We do meet tomorrow. We didn't have any requests. I think, I believe we have two people presenting on Wednesday. I said tomorrow, but Wednesday's our next meeting, so, yeah. They, Jody and Megan have a lot going on. They did a big presentation, and they're going to go back to their board, which I know they have board nominations. I'm not sure when that's going to be final. And they will come back to tourism to tell us who the new board members are and hopefully a new MOU. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It wasn't an Alverian Board of Adjustments meeting. Airport Commission Meeting, I was not in attendance at that. Also, on my way to the municipal conference. However, it was a pretty light agenda. I think the only item on the agenda, I don't know that...
They didn't make any decisions on anything?
Okay.
They were able to do a problem, they were able to find, they were able to live with some of the doubts of it.
Any questions regarding the reporting? Parks and Recreation Commission Special Meeting on September 6th. Mrs. Swallow.
We did a change order to add a diving board and to keep the climbing wall, and the turf project is complete.
Any questions regarding the Parks and Recreation Meeting? Next item is the Cemetery Meeting on September 12th. Mr. Ford, you weren't there either?
No, but Heather was.
Drake can report on this one, he was there as well.
I think they appointed a new chairperson, Paul Joe Lewis, and then talked to, talked about the new grant for the roads going into the cemetery.
Any questions regarding Cemetery Meeting? Next item is the Finance Committee Meeting on September 16th. Dr. Lahr.
It was a pretty routine meeting. Our funds seem to be kind of tracking along normal for the year. They're still low right now, but it's early in the year. We have four new CDs coming up to look at putting in new CDs in October, so we're working on that. And also, I know Ms. Beer is going to be looking at any other free cash that we have laying around, trying to find ways to put it into the ICS account to make us more interest as we go forward. So that's about all we've got here today.
Any questions regarding Finance Committee Meeting?
How much are the CDs for, and how much loose cash do we have?
Yeah, two of the AEDA scholarship ones, one for $156,000, one for $205,000, and one for $213,000. And then the swimming pool has a $528,000 CD coming up currently. And then, that's what Sadie is going to be looking at, is how much free cash we have. That's what we were kind of looking through the sheet and seeing what there is. But like, we know on this other sheet, like, we've got about $250,000 in scholarship fund cash sitting around in an account right now that we're looking at putting into something. And so that's what she's going to go through and kind of figure out what accounts could be, cash accounts could be transferred into this.
And that's the scholarship, when it's not many, that it winds up going for a scholarship because it's excess?
This money will eventually get paid in scholarships, but it sits around for a while in the accounts before we pay it out. So we put it in that savings account.
Tell me where you would...
Along the way.
Okay.
Yep, appreciate it.
Any other questions regarding Finance Committee Meeting? Next item is the Mayor's Report. I may get in trouble for this, but I want to let the board know that City of Alba lost a good friend and a longtime partner last week. Bill Meyer's father, Gene, was one of the, one of the engineers that did a lot of infrastructure for our community over the years. Gene loved Alba, and he was a good man, and we're going to miss him. And so if you would keep the Myers family and your thoughts and prayers, that would be great. Bill, you can beat me up later.
That's okay, thank you.
And we are sorry. If you never had the opportunity to meet Gene, then you haven't had the strongest handshake in the world. So he was, he was something, but we will miss him. We did also get the opportunity to have several of us attend the municipality annual conference last week. It was a great meeting. There was a lot of good information shared, a lot of good networking, and think that we'll probably have some things that come out of that and come back to council here, you know, at one point or another. And so I do want to thank the council members, Gail, Joe, Greg, and Matt for attending, but also the staff, Steve, Sadie, and even Drake was there for a little bit, so it was a good deal. Other than that, I entertain questions. Next item is the Business Manager Report.
It's like, like Mary said, a lot of good learning went on last week at the annual conference. It was a good time. Good to re, make some, reengage some old crevices and make new ones. Most of my focus this last month has, has haven't been on Locust Street. It's coming along, not as fast as we like, but it's coming along. Did they get the whole south side poured?
Whole south side is poured, yes.
Had they given it done on the north?
They did not pour today on the north side.
They got the frame?
They've got it, they've got it off home, they're shaking it for them.
So the plan is if they get that north side done tomorrow, we're going to try to start laying down some asphalt on the 700 block on Thursday, Thursday and Friday. And then following week, we'll knock out the 800 block, which will take a lot less time and a lot less asphalt. What'd you say, about 400 tons?
400 tons.
Do a lot of asphalt. Better to get laid down, we've still got some warm weather. Still working on the manager's report. Got an email from, from the council with Parsons, and so, and I should talk to them later. Got some ideas on how to send out these weekly, if not biweekly, emails, the kind of things that are going on, potential agenda items. Unfortunately, I don't ever really get all the finalized information for the agenda items until about the day before the agenda is due. But we just have discussion about what's coming up and what's going on. One thing I did want to share with you, because I know this has been asked, how are we tracking the, all the complaints we get online? I've had to have them put together in the spreadsheet. I'm trying to figure out a way to print this off that you can read it. As you can see, this one has a lot of action items that have been taken on this one particular property. I tried to print other, like I said, we've got to figure something out because it's going to be eight more pages. And I don't think anyone's set to sift through eight more pages. I made sure you're able to email it out so people can take a look at it on their computers. And like I said, there's, as I tab over, there's a lot of properties these guys are working on. And talking to Chief Miller, he's got somewhere else to add to it, but, so they are actively working on these properties, whether it's tall weeds and grass, whether it's nuisance houses, whether something needs to be abated, or the clutter's dilapidated. They're trying to get this all together on the spreadsheet, but it's a, it's a pretty massive spreadsheet, so. But that's working, we're trying to figure out a way to get this towards usable and not just eight more pages of words. So, but just, you know, this is a preview of it. It's, it's in the works, it's coming. So it's a work in progress right now, so. Other than that, I think that's all that I have.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Ford?
Appreciate everything.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So, there was a little email. I will fill out your travel claims, and I'll need to get you to sign them sometime, so probably next week through around the office. Or heck, maybe sign them next week at the special meeting, because I have one on the 25th. And get you to sign your travel claim forms and get those turned into heaven. So, but I'll work it all up, so, right now, I thought of that.
And then reiterate that we did fail to, despite error, to bring the city economics contract back. We've got it, we just didn't get it on the agenda. So we'll have that, hopefully, a special meeting so that they can start off with the fourth quarter, or second quarter, however you want to look at it. Doing work. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ford? Okay. Item seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and we ask that speaker please identify himself or herself.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Paris. I live at 903 Maple Street. On June 25th of this year, I left for vacation to Arizona and returned back home on July 6th. My water bill for June 20th to July 20th showed that I supposedly used 24,000 gallons, 24,900 gallons of water. My normal use is around 3,000 gallons, give or take a cup or 100. Upon receiving my bill for that time, I checked my entire property for any leaks. Toilet's running, and I also checked the water meter. There were no signs of any extreme water showing. I went to the city hall and requested a reread. On September 12th, I was finally told they had a detailed water usage for my property. While talking to Heather at city hall, she showed me that their records showed I used approximately 20,000 gallons of water in three days. I believe those days were June 27th, 28th, and 29th. I do not, nor do my neighbors, have a swimming pool. While on vacation, my kids would come by, get the mail, and put it in the house. My neighbors look over my place while I'm gone, and I do the same for them. Talking to everyone, they all stated that they never saw anything out of the ordinary while we were gone. After talking to Heather, I spoke to Gary Perks. He again showed me the water usage for those days. Again, approximately 20,000 gallons of water were used. Gary and I at that time went and talked to Mr. Ford. Heather was also present. All three told me they only go by what the computer says. Since then, I reached out to all the city council members to see what to do next. There was only one city council member that I wasn't able to get ahold of. I don't know what happened, I just know that that much water was never used at my residence. I believe in going through chain of command, and that's what I've done. I really don't know what to do next. Any help with understanding this situation would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. I did pass out folders for everybody. It shows pictures that are timestamped and has the place that we were at, at those times. Thank you, Snapchat. And I also showed records of my debit card where I was also in Arizona at that time.
Thank you, and I think, you know, and just to reiterate, but, you know, we can't take any action today, and if we need to have it on a future agenda, we will, or hopefully it can be resolved without council action. Any other public comment? Well, thank you all for being here today. The next item is a presentation from Enterprise Fleet Services. I didn't catch your name.
John Holland with Enterprise Fleet Management, but we do provide fleet services for cities' commercial clients. I'll give a little brief intro, myself. I'm from a town called Canadian, Oklahoma, which is much smaller than this. Grew up on a farm, went to college, played baseball, actually spent one year at Paymantal State, so I drove either close to here, pie here quite a few times in my life. But I've been with Enterprise for 15 years. I left Tallaburton after about four years, went to work for a family-owned company, which was Enterprise, and we are still family-owned today. Our main headquarters out of Clayton, North, are Clayton, Missouri, and we are regional headquarters at Oklahoma City. Sheriff, Sheriff was Steven. We met at the CMAO conference about a year ago, and then we connected multiple times, meeting, talking about how we can help cities. If you want to go and change the slide. Here's some of the cities that we actually work with. City of Woodwork would be somebody pretty familiar to you guys. Some of the smaller towns, four to five to six thousand population would be Marlowe, Watonga, Eufaula, Prague, or some of those size. Pulse Valley is a fairly new client of ours as well, but we really have kind of taken an approach to city government to help them manage their fleets effectively. And so in essence, we're taking what Enterprise does extremely well, buy vehicles at a good price, operate them for the lowest cost, and then sell them while they still have some value, and maximize that return on the back end. So when we implement this to our commercial clients or to our government clients, we're giving them our expertise and years and years and years of infrastructure being built from everything from the acquisition side of this to the resale. So what it, it really does come down to, and so each city that I meet with, I'll actually go in and find out what they've got going on. You guys have an internal shop, you have bulk fueling, those are options that I probably wouldn't recommend unless there was a major change with either of those items. So we came up with acquisition, funding, vehicle aftermarket. We do everything from sedans to police vehicles. We'll do everything with the exception of an ambulance and a fire truck. Fire engines and ambulances are really, they're out of our niche, and anybody who's ever looked into one of those, you know why. They're extremely difficult and very hard to, to understand for the most part. The parts that we've left off, the maintenance and fuel programs, we have telematics, vehicle insurance, obviously those are things that I just don't think are, are a great fit, and I just noticed an error on my bill. This one may have went to another council meeting, disregard the city of Pulse Valley up there. Go ahead, the next slide. The way our cities are partnering with us is through a due diligence process called Sourcewell. It's a purchasing cooperative. Every city in Oklahoma is involved with that in one shape or another, probably bought something off of it, whether it be lawn mowers or, but it gives the city the ability to piggyback off of a bid that we put out there nationally. So I bid that, or we bid that as a company, basing it on hundreds of thousands of cars, not, you know, 25 or 30 with these cities that I'm meeting with. And so it gives you basically our best possible pricing, and it helps with the due diligence process that it was awarded through a contractual, contractual bid. So what makes us different from everyone in this space? We actually provide local account manager. City of Watonga is one of our clients, they actually have a client strategy manager, Clint Harvey, that goes out and meets with them a couple times a year, making sure that the plan's working, making recommendations based on what's happening in the market. So we all know what happened with COVID, everything was kind of crazy with the vehicle world, so we actually helped our clients not only grow their fleets, but we also helped them resell some of the ones that were in excess, making a ton of money off the resale side of that. So again, it's all about how we buy them, how do we operate them, and how we resell it. But you'll have a local team that would come out three or four times a year, come to council with budget meetings, doing anything that it needs to happen to make sure that we put the right plan in place year over year. From an acquisition standpoint, I have multiple ways that I can purchase vehicles. By far the most cost-effective way is ordering a vehicle exactly how our clients want them. I have the ability to buy from dealerships, and then we also have inventory that comes in for other clients that they may not need. So let's say I ordered an Alva 5, and they needed 4, because we had to replace one earlier than we perceived, and so we may have an extra vehicle that makes sense. As of recently, we had at one point 25 Explorer, Police Explorers on there that we were able to get to some of our clients across the country. Anything from an aftermarket, we plan it all. I'm going to the manufacturers, I'm putting all manufacturers against each other. When I work with cities, I tend to lean towards the local dealerships that are here so that I know that we can get recalls, warranty, maintenance, anything like that that may happen with the vehicles. So I'm, I'm very cognitive of what, what's in the areas, so those are things that go into this, but like the police upfitting, that vehicle's going to come to the city of Alba already ready to go. Gets the officer put in it, the equipment that the city has, and then it's ready to go. So this kind of gives a good snapshot of the depreciation, depreciation side of what this looks like. So if I go to this 2024, and anybody who knows trucks, that's the wrong picture, but it's the only one that would pull off and be up there nicely. A 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 work truck, four by four crew cab. If I look on the government, our GM's website, that's a $46,000 vehicle. Government pricing on that is around 38. If you'll click it a couple times, it'll go all the way through this. There you go. So what cities typically do is they'll buy a vehicle and run it forever, so then you get your operating costs, your, your resale goes way down. So what I've done on this is a 15,000 mile a year application. So if we ran that vehicle 10 years, 150,000 miles, that vehicle's worth 7, $8,000. It's not worth a ton. If you were to put it on an annual outlay, that's about $3,000 a year you're going to spend. If I ran that vehicle four years with 60,000 miles on it, it's going to be worth $25,000 to $27,000. Shows you that the shorter amount of time that we're running these. And so most of our cities will run vehicles anywhere from two to five years. That's the max term. On a fleet like Alva's, that would put us on about five to six vehicle replacements per year, and I'll talk more about the funding side of this, but Enterprise is helping with everything from the acquisition to the disposal of these vehicles, and so we're maximizing these returns. Some cities that we work with, we have your regular half-ton truck for supervisor or Parks and Rec that would resell extremely well one year after we bought it, and that's why that instance right there, one year, 38,000, we bought it for 38,000. So in essence, that vehicle would be selling for about what we bought for or more. And so that happens quite a bit. We do this a lot with our colleges and universities. OSU's a great client of ours that's been in business, or been with us for close to nine years now, and we've replaced a lot of their vehicles. Some of our cities are fairly new. We started our government marketing towards cities about two and a half years ago or three years ago. We have a couple that were before that, but really, most of their fleets are fairly new in place. Next slide. It's got to do some weird transition, sorry about that. For dramatic effect.
Very dramatic.
Slows down the process. So the way that we're getting this in place is that if you went out to buy one or two vehicles, you may spend $100,000 to get those two vehicles. For that same $100,000, I can replace five to six, or seven or eight, depending on what types of vehicles we're putting in place, with an open-ended equity lease. The word lease is typically a bad word, you get hit with mileage penalties, wear and tear. Ours is an open-ended, which means that it has no beginning or end, it's set by a reviewed annual term, so that allows for the government side of it to look good. On the other side of it, there's no mileage penalties, nowhere in tear, and the city retains all the equity at the end. So if I take a $40,000 vehicle and run it down to an $8,000 balance, you got a lower payment throughout the life of that vehicle because we are not paying for 100% of it, but on the backside of it, you're going to resell it for 20, you get $12,000 equity back as a city. And what they'll do, most cities will run that from one vehicle to the next, and then your next payments went down to $300, and it's saving the city more and more money year over year. Not to mention we're, there are vehicles with no maintenance. I mean, most of these vehicles are going to go 5,000 to 7,000 miles a year, so it's going to need a little change, tire rotations. A lot of them won't ever get out of warranty. And then really, the main component where I think we do the most for cities, we sell 85% of our vehicles directly to buyers, our buyers. And what that basically means is I've taken an auction process and created a network of buyers who are buying not only my city's vehicles, but my Enterprise or InterCard vehicles, other fleet client vehicles. And what that, we basically set the market. We sell about 1.2, 1.3, that's a little bit less than what we did because we just got our final numbers, 1.2, 1.3 million vehicles a year, and we're selling them at 15% better than book value. So it's again, hand-selling these to the right people who are looking for these types of vehicles that makes a huge impact. And then on the last part of it, I mean, all this has to be, we're, we're actually moving towards a world where it's all AI data, understanding this, and so if you go to the next slide, that's really kind of the technology side of this. Enterprise is looking at a very granular level, so we can come into Stephen and say, hey, you need to replace truck 117 because it's operating at 78 cents a mile when you should be operating at 44 cents a mile, or 46 cents a mile. And so it gives us the ability to pinpoint which vehicles are costing the most money to the city, which over time will lower the cost of ownership. And that's, that's really what I wanted to share today. We've talked about this, we wanted to bring it to council, show you what we can do, and then hopefully, if that makes sense, we'll come back for more of a proposal-type agenda item.
Have, have you started looking at what a proposal would look like for us?
Yeah, it, like I said, it's, it's going to move towards a 14 or 15-year cycle to about a five-year cycle is what my recommendation for the city would be. There's quite a few that probably need to be replaced, and most modeling will say replace it all at once. I'm from a small town, I understand where the budgets come from, and so I would push for a phased-in approach, which is just taking your fleet, dividing it by five years. And I, I may get it wrong, but there's still probably a need for... And I, I may get it wrong, but there's still probably a need for a couple of growth vehicles that just really haven't been available for budget reasons.
I had a question.
Absolutely.
I like your presentation on the, you know, you're gonna sell it in one year and make money. Can you bring me four people that you've done that for, say this is the car, this is what we paid for it, and this is what I sold it for?
Yeah, we can definitely put out a request for our clients to, to give an example of it.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, some examples of that. It sounds great, I just don't, I mean, and I know, I mean, and that price that you showed us there, that's just state contract price, I assume?
Um, so every government vehicle manufacturer, they have what they call bid assistance for government entities, and so that's what that's coming from. It's the forty-six thousand less invoice is what we sell vehicles at, less the incentives. So typically, if you looked at it from state bid, it's a wash, but usually, when you get into the option side of this on purchasing, the options at the state bid level is based on NSRP, we're still at invoice. So we, we can become quite a bit cheaper if some of the options are more expensive. Actually, I can provide documentation this evening on, we probably sell about six or seven hundred thousand of those vehicles a year, twenty thousand miles, so.
Yeah, that'd be great, just to have a see that.
Yep, absolutely.
I'd like to see like a more comprehensive, like five, five or ten-year breakdown of kind of the cost of going.
I'd have to put you in, no, I'm just, a two-hour meeting. Yeah, next agenda is gonna have a little bit of a gap in it.
Yeah, I'd like to see something like that.
For sure, and that's what the modeling will go through, and that's where we're at now, is, does it make enough sense to push it through, um, to continue the process? I don't wanna waste Stephen's time, obviously, if it's something that doesn't make sense for y'all guys, on paper or from a fifty-thousand-foot view, it does, so.
Now, we have a lot of vehicles, not a lot, several vehicles that are newer, still have a lot of life in them, do you guys take those on, or how does that work?
So what I, what, based on the state's policy, once you buy a vehicle through the state's bid process, you have to sell it at an open auction. The vehicles that Enterprise does would not have to go through that same process because we're the title owners through the life of that vehicle, and y'all guys are the registered owners.
So any vehicle we have?
Would just continue out until you were ready to surplus it as usual.
Okay.
So again, that's part of that phase in, you don't have to rip the Band-Aid off and sell all your new vehicles and bring in a, you know, a whole mine, we would work our way into it.
What other municipalities are you guys working in right now?
Um, just cities around here, uh, City Watonga, Woodward, I'm going to Guiman tomorrow night to do a presentation with them. I've actually, we're pretty far along on that one, and they have a, it's really weird, calendar year, fiscal year, so most cities are July first in Oklahoma. So it's, it is kind of weird out there, but I'm gonna go out there and present tomorrow for kind of approval to move forward on that one, so that would be another one in that area. Prague, Marlowe, those are smaller towns, like I said, but I think we're about thirteen or fourteen cities now. I have pretty much, I started with colleges and universities, pretty much everyone except for most of us. I don't know, I met with them back in the day, that is probably six, seven years ago, when I partnered with Oklahoma State University, and it just didn't push through. I was fixed there, I'm, I'm pretty sure we met. I saw it a while ago.
One court of perplication would say, he said that they don't do fire trucks, they do do brush rigs.
Absolutely.
But they don't do like engine one, but for brush rigs, they can do that, which would help to keep that fleet newer as well. Because basically, it makes you buy a, a cabin chassis, right?
Yeah, for the city of Talco, we came up with a, they actually came up with it, but we kind of worked through it with them. Their brush truck has a slide that goes under this flat bed on the truck, comes off, goes to the next truck, so they can replace every twenty-four months, thirty-six months, whenever they want to, just for the wear and tear on that truck to keep it down.
And they also, so for like our water department trucks, the street department trucks, they have the box on it with heat and tools and stuff. If we need to get a new box, we can work that through Enterprise, and the truck will come with the branded box on it, or if the box we have is good, take it off our old truck, put it on things coming in, so.
And we'll give you the information, we'll say, hey, if you leave the body on here, this vehicle's worth X. If you want to replace the body and get a new body with the, a new truck with a new body, this is what your cost associated with that would be, so it's all about numbers and math, so.
Who's in charge of the maintenance program on the fleet?
So if your vehicles, if you wanna poke holes into them, the oil changes, all that would be done through the city, like, I didn't put it into any kind of our proposal because you have an in-house shop. If that ever changes and you wanna use local shops or something like that, Sandridge is one of our clients that has quite a few vehicles in this area. So we have shops there, it's just, does it make sense to continue doing it in-house, or does it make sense to utilize a program like ours, which is just using local shops?
But then if there's a recall or something that would go to you and then you would contact?
Yeah, it's, well, I mean, the data in the web, website would all, it would communicate to whoever the fleet person is, our contact at City of Alba. Say, hey, this is the vehicles with warranty, this is the recalls, I mean, we live in a world of recalls now, so that would be something you'd have to, we'd have to get done at a local dealership.
So then you try to base the fleet on the dealerships you've got before, so you're gonna?
The work, the work can get done, I mean, they're gonna have warranty items, they're gonna have recall stuff, so let's make sure we can do it here.
Well, thank you.
I apologize for presenting and running, but I'm running to Guiman. Everybody who's been that way knows.
You better eat dinner in Alba.
Should've stopped the trip here. Thank you, guys.
Safe travels.
Take care.
Okay. Won't be the last we hear about that, but Steve wanted to get that information out and start getting that information out in front of us, so thank you for finding that. Item nine is discussion and action to approve nominations to the, the appointments, to the reappointments to the City of Alba Planning Commission. We have missed some reappointments, so we're just gonna reappoint everybody with their terms. And those are Christie Corneli, Mary Hamilton, Charles Murrow, Tyler Crawford, Mark Nichols, and Matt Adair. There are no new members here, they're all continuing, and we're needing to get them reorganized because there's some planning commission work that's gonna need to be done, so. Fire marshal, code enforcement officer Grimsley has reached out to all of them, they're all willing to continue serving. And so I recommend that, or I would entertain a motion to approve these reappointments.
This is, this is the group for city, the group that city economics wanted to have in place of working?
No. This is a planning commission that deals with zoning and that, that kind of thing.
I'll motion to approve nominations to the City of Alba Planning Commission, Christie Corneli, Mary Hamilton, Charles Murrow, Tyler Crawford, Mark Nichols, and Matt Adair.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Parsons, and I got a second from Dr. Lahr first, to brief point to the planning commission, Christie Corneli, Mary Hamilton, Charles Murrow, Tyler Crawford, Mark Nichols, and Matt Adair. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Brooks Day.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right. Action ten, this was something that we should've had on last month's agenda, we had the audit presentation, and now we need a, a motion to accept the results of the audit. This isn't, this isn't a confirmation that we agree with them or disagree with them, it's just we're accepting that we may dispute the audit.
I'll make a motion to accept the results of the FY twenty twenty-three audit.
I'll second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Brooks to accept the results of the fiscal year twenty-three audit. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item eleven is discussion and action to approve the City of Alba accounting procedures policy. Steve or Sadie, you wanna take that?
So basically, what the Department of Commerce has said now is that for us, they were closing out grants, they want us to have accounting procedures, and they also have a policy, and they also want us to have a policy on records retention. We're gonna relax them and say, look, we mirrors, or we follow state statutes as far as records detention goes, and they're okay with that, but they want us to have an accounting policy. And so city, uh, put one together, I can pull it up here.
So from what I'm, what I gather, it's that this policy is, is, does not represent any new procedures, this is existing procedures for the City of Alba, we're just putting them in policy format, is that correct?
Yes, this is our day-to-day procedures, what kind of accounting basis, which were cash, so that's stated there, how we do our utility billing, the dates. There is the section on grants, like how we, you know, who has authorization to submit for grants, so there, it's very basic, and it follows our guidelines. And I mean, I think it's, it's detailed, but I think there's fourteen pages, and then the very back, appendix A outlines the approval, which states, you know, city council, when you guys are required to approve, and, and who has authority.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alba accounting procedures policy.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, and a second from Mrs. Swallow to approve the City of Alba accounting procedure policy. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you, Sadie, thank you, Steve, for getting that together, and... Nothing is qualified for free, free money, hopefully. Okay. Item twelve is discussion and action to approve City of Alba Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine. A resolution canvassing the results of the special election conducted in the City of Alba, Oklahoma on twenty-seventh day of August twenty twenty-four for the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, and ordinance amending chapter twenty, article five, section twenty dash one forty-seven to increase the excise tax from five percent to eight percent, and accept the results of such election, declaring the measure is passed. This is the hotel tax that the voters voted on just here a few weeks ago, that passed, and so this is just accepting the results, and I believe, that's too small for me to read, but it was an overwhelming majority passed this measure. I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve City of Alba Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine as stated in the agenda.
Second. Have a motion from Dr. Lahr and a second by Mr. Hoffman to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine as stated in item number twelve of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Item thirteen is discussion and action to approve City of Alba ordinance twenty twenty-four zero one one, and ordinance amending chapter twenty, finance and taxation of the code of ordinances for the City of Alba, Oklahoma by amending article five, section twenty, dash one four seven to increase the excise tax from five percent to eight percent. This is taking action on what the voters approved, we, they voted for us to change our ordinance, and so this measure is to change our ordinance. I would entertain a motion to take effect on January first. Takes effect January first.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Lahr to approve Alba ordinance, City of Alba ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one as stated in item thirteen of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item fourteen is discussion and action to approve Park Hill contract amendment ten to perform engineering services for the FAA grant project to rehabilitate the taxiway and taxiway lights. Get that amended, amendment in your packet, this has been through the airport board. It will not have any funding implications on the general fund, this is all airport funds for this, but this allows Park Hill to proceed with that FAA grant project. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Park Hill contract amendment number ten to perform engineering services for the FAA, or FAA grant project to rehabilitate the taxiway and taxiway lights.
All second. Motion from Mr. Hoffman, a second from Mr. Parsons to approve Park Hill contract amendment number ten as stated in item fourteen of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item fifteen is discussion and action to approve the deed of three point nine seven acres of land to the Northwest Technology Center situated in the southwest quarter of section twenty-six. T two seven N, R one four W, I M, Woods County, Oklahoma. This item goes along with item sixteen, the technology center has asked if the council would consider doing a land swap so that they might be able to have continuous properties for some programming that they are doing. This actually gives us more continuous property for a recreation complex, and it gives them more continuous property for their technology center. So it's an even, even swap on the land as far as acreage is concerned, and it'll, it'll benefit both us and the technology center.
Looking at a, a design from a really long time ago, I'm looking at just the satellite image, I believe, is that in the area at one time that's discussed for future ballfield expansion?
I was thinking, so track A, to the lower left, that's where the new Northwestern Burn Metcalf family track is located. Track B, just a few feet of that is where we used to allow them to harvest hay on that side, so they cut that down by like twenty feet, which I've already changed that in the contract that they've already signed this summer. So it's just, we're swapping those two pieces of land, the tech center is gonna use that area, and plus some other area to the north of that to create kind of a, a truck-driving route.
I'm all for supporting that program, I think that, and I don't know, maybe it's something that we will never do, that was my only concern, was I think it kind of cut into the area, and this is a design from many years ago.
I don't, we definitely heard about that from the ballfields immediately.
I was gonna say, I think that whole, that whole southwest corner?
This was the design.
Or southeast corner is pretty well untouched by this.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, because it, this is just coming twenty foot past the, that's a building right there, and then they've already got a, a barn or some kind of shop that they've got there that they do programming in, and it's just giving them a little bit more feet to the south of that, plus more acreage to the west.
Okay.
So that area to the southeast, right now, we're doing that, is, is cutting hay.
And like, so I know we don't use it for, we don't use it for anything now, but I, I'd hate to do this and then we realize someday that we wanna put another ballfield in there and not have the, the space.
I know, there's, there's plenty, we could put a whole another, another entire pod.
Okay, that's, that's, that's.
I mean, we're talking about, like I said, I believe the magic number is like twenty, twenty feet additional to the south is all it was.
So we're getting an equal, an equal piece of land in exchange.
Both of them are, are three point nine seven acres.
Okay. And so the piece of land we're getting, is that where the track is?
It is.
But the city, we'll have an agreement with Northwestern on the track and we won't be responsible for maintaining that? Is that correct?
No, that's MOU.
Okay, perfect.
Do we get any rent off of that, that land? Northwestern uses it or what do we get in exchange for that?
Northwestern has a MOU with Parks and Recreation where they pay for the use of, there's a, there's a trade-off between maintenance and compensation for everything that Northwestern does out of the ball, but the direct part.
Well, I would motion to approve the deeding of 3.97 acres of land to the Northwest Technology Center situated in the southwest quarter of Section 26 and T27N R14WIM Woods County, Oklahoma. I don't know if I read that right.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Bowman to deed 3.97 acres of land to Northwest Technology Center as stated in item 15 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Item 16, the opposite. This is to approve the city of Alba to be deeded 3.97 acres of land from the Northwest Technology Center situated in the southwest quarter of Section 26 T27N R14WIM Woods County, Oklahoma. Is that right? They're both the same?
It's both in the same.
Okay.
It's in the same order.
Okay.
There'll be specific legals in the deeds.
Okay.
Which, well, that's going later.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Alba to be deeded 3.97 acres of land from the Northwest Technology Center situated in the southwest quarter of Section 26 T27N R14WIM Woods County, Oklahoma.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve city of Alba to be deeded 3.97 acres of land from the Northwest Technology Center stated in item 16 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Item 17 is new business. We do not have anything that would qualify as new business. Item 18, remarks and inquiries by council members.
I had a question about the water line. It goes out north and across the river, then under the railroad tracks. The county said that they are not going to maintain that line.
County won't maintain, county doesn't maintain any water lines?
Well, I mean, not the county, but I mean the water, sorry, the water, the rural water district. Out of the cities had that line until now. I know that the change is going over.
And they've got to sign the agreement with that water district that they're going to maintain it from the meter.
They said that they would not maintain the line going under the railroad track, that they don't, it's in their policy not to maintain it. So I didn't know, I was told just to check and see when that city would stop servicing that line or sending water through it out that way, so.
Their board voted and signed an agreement contrary to what you're saying.
Okay.
That makes sense, right?
Yep. That would not maintain anymore.
That's what I'm maintaining anymore.
I'd ask out here, they'd said that it checked, right? So I was, I thought.
In fact, city council and their board both signed that, or approved that agreement.
They, they were going to go back to their board and they said they probably wouldn't maintain that line, so that they would have to go back to a different line out there. So I just thought I'd ask them out.
They can cut their service off anytime they want.
Okay.
Well, did they say anything to you? Did they say anything to you when you went out there about maintaining the line?
They just, we didn't talk about that. They just said it went under a railroad and it caused issues and it was, I was like, they don't want to do that. I'll ask them. What are your concerns going forward?
I mean, that'll take action. And it's already had action.
Yeah. I mean, we got a meter now. And when we put that meter in, it became theirs anyway, didn't it?
According to contract, it's not.
Yeah, I just, they just, I would thought, I thought they were going to maintain it and we were told that they had to do like a quarter mile of trenching because where, to where they would put a water meter in and because they said that line was going to go dead. And we're still on the.
How are we doing?
Water grid, the city out there.
There's a discussion, okay. We're going to have, we're going to have to bring that one back up later. But I mean, I mean, Mr. Ford can get you a copy of the contract.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
Yeah, my brain keeps going back to this. Is there a way, I mean, we're all, we're all electronic, we're at our computer. Is there a way to set alerts, like if somebody's using abnormal, we can notify them or something?
I don't think it's going to be that late.
You have low flow alerts that show like not enough usage and high flow alerts that trigger re reads, but that's not.
Are they real time?
No. They're, I mean, they're by, by month, they always say when we read our meter.
Because for it to talk to our computers, we would have to drive from near that meter. We'd have to have a reason to be over there.
Okay.
With our receiver on. And we usually do that when it's time to read meters.
Right.
Well, that's, that's a next.
We used to have a policy, I don't know if it's an official policy yet, but Steve Tomer, but I mean, it's been a ways back, but when he could, you know, he could determine that it wasn't usage on part of the customer, if it was a leave, they didn't know about it or something, and even if it was on their side of the meter, they would usually write it off.
When, when, with our previous city attorney, which was probably the same city attorney that is what you're.
Yeah.
But since I've been mayor, we've, I don't know, this one seems a little gray. I don't know. So I, I think what we need to do is have Drew look into what we can do within, you know, our legal limits.
Yeah.
And, and I'm willing to do whatever we can do within our legal limits. Because I, I don't believe he used the water.
I don't, and I'm not, and I, I'd say a lot more about it. I'm just trying to keep with open, trying not to say too much to keep with the open reading.
But I think.
I want to say, but I'm just trying to.
But I, I think we, I think we need to have Drew look in and see what, you know, what we can do within our legal limits and then.
Yeah.
And if it takes council action, we bring back the council action. If it's handled by staff, Drew can communicate that and I, I think that's what, of course of action should be. Any other remarks and inquiries by council members? Well, then we will adjourn the city council meeting and we will open, yes, I'm going to, and I apologize that I didn't do this here.
Hey, don't run off.
Please call the vote.
I'm the one you didn't call.
I call the roll.
I'll call it the word.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Adir.
Item 3 is discussion in action. Actually, we're going to go swap the order around and we're going to go to item 6 and then 5. And then.
3.
Okay. Item 6 is discussion in action on authorizing a mayor or city manager to execute an application for a construction permit to Oklahoma's Department of Environmental Quality for the construction of water mains and sanitary sewer mains with rigoons in the AVAR Rail Trust Authority Industrial Park located in the east half of Section 23 T26NR14WIM. We have representatives from Myers Engineering, we have our public works director, Drake Lewis, and then representing the AVAR Rail Authority, Stan Vixler, here with us today for presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Do you want to go first? Tell me about the project.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, what we have, I'm Bill Myers, by the way, and obviously you know Drake. This is Glenn Hayes, Glenn's with Myers Engineering. You've probably seen him around in the city. I'll give him to the council meeting. You've probably seen him around. And obviously you know Stan Vixler, I'm sure most of you do. Stan is the chairman of the AVAR Rail Regional Trust Authority. I always get that wrong, but anyway, he's the chairman of that authority. So what they're doing is they are developing a half section of land along 281 between Grady and Garvin roads and they own this land. So what we have is we have two 16-inch water mains running parallel to US 281 on the east side of 281. So what's proposing is, and they have, by the way, this, the entity has funding for all this, the grant to the Department of Commerce, it's ARRA funds. So what we're proposing is to, this land, we're, they're setting it up for a future industrial park, okay, activity. So basically, the water improvements required to service the park are a 12-inch water main along the north side of the property, a 12-inch main along the east side of the property, and a 12-inch along the south side of the property with interconnections into the city of Alba's two 16-inch mains that run parallel to US 281. Okay? So the site will be served off of the, the new water storage tank that we're going to discuss in item 5, it'll, it'll be served off of that water storage tank and also the water wells from our water system. So ultimately, they, they're looking at some type of industrial usage here. So we've put in a gravity sanitary sewer main system that runs along Grady Road, runs along 281 to the quarter section line, runs along Garvin to the 281 and then northward along 281 to quarter section line. Then there's a piece of gravity main that runs along quarter section line to a proposed lift station. And the lift, the lift station will then pump it westward to a proposed new system on the west side of their property. And this, the new system is just set up for 150 employees that would be on the site. Okay, it's not, at this point, it's not set up for a large, they usually, they would use large amounts of water in the process at this point. So it would do 150 employees. So that's, that's the infrastructure that is proposed. As a, as a, an aside to the project, the, the people that would come in potentially could use, could need a large quantity of water in the range of 300,000 gallons a day to 500,000 gallons a day. So to put us in that position to be able to provide water, then we need to enhance our water well field to do that. They've obtained funding to enhance Alba's water well field. And that is also a part of the project we're discussing. So what we looked at applying for funding, we looked at the potential, we've talked about this with staff, we'll bring it to you now, but the potential of doing six offset wells minimum along this road, I think it's Bryant Road, which is 3060, which is south of, you know, south of, what's the highway?
Uh, the, it'd be on County Route 430 and Blaine Road. It's on, I can't remember the highway. Same as the highway out there.
It's basically on the north side of our well field. This, this field, we believe is originally established probably in the early 40s. Nineteen 40s. And so, and one of the wells is still being used today. It does need to be upgraded. Okay, so there's approximately eight or nine wells, 1, 2, 3, 4, about eight wells in this reach that, that do need to be offset. We've already applied for funding for six that we know of. We also looked at alternates of, of replacing wells in this series called the 20 series on the southern end of the, of the section to the south of these wells. This is a 10 series, this is a 20 series. These wells will produce around 150 gallons a minute in that range. So again, they have funding for this and what we're proposing is that, let me rephrase that too, also including in that is we're replacing this water transmission main that starts at your chlorine facility and extends west about a mile to service these wells. Okay, because that line is put in, from what we can tell, everything I found, put in the earth for around, actually during the war was put in. So it's, it's time to upgrade that on. So the, the direct cost to the city is, is nothing as they obtain grants to pay for the work. Now, obviously, the wells are already operating wells in the area, so it's going to be maintenance with the wells, but you're adding six wells to your system. The wells that we're looking at, we will do, the wells will be in buildings and each well will have a generator and it'll be, have a propane tank system with it. And also the wells will be integrated into your telemetry system that's being installed right now by Work Hyper. It's underway. And Scott, come on. And so that's underway, this, when this happens, we'll integrate that into that system. Okay? So that's what the wells, so that's going to produce, you know, somewhere around a million gallons a day, somewhere in that range. So gives us a little capacity, gives us some redundancy by doing that. So the, again, on this piece here, what they're proposing was if they construct these lines, the sewer, the sewer system, sewer mains, and then the water improvements, then they, when it's completed, it would be dedicated to the city of Alba in some form, and the city of Alba would maintain the lines. Like I said, there's no direct cost to the city of Alba, there'd just be maintenance over time.
Would, would that, how does that work with the rural water district serving that area?
That's a good, that's a, that's a really good question, Mr. Mayor Parker. The question, the question is, this is in their service area. We've talked to them a little bit. I hadn't talked to the board, I've talked to staff. There was not a great concern at the time about it, but regardless of what happens, whether, at the end of the day, all the water comes from the city of Alba.
So we're either going to sell it directly to the authority or we're going to sell it to the rural water.
And then they'll sell to an end user. So either way, but the, the problem with, these mains are 12-inch mains and the city of Alba would be more equipped to maintain these lines, okay? And it would be difficult for us to maintain the sewer without maintaining the water. So we need to work, we basically need to maintain all, if the waters wanted to be involved, you know, that, that could happen, if we could figure that out over time. So, you know, we, we've, we've talked to them upfront, we've looked at what we're doing and, and I, I think it's maybe, maybe they felt like it was a little premature maybe to really, to talk much about it, but we've got to move forward with this. There's a funding deadline, the funding is already there, but we need to spend it by a certain time. So this is the, I think Alba, owning the lines at the end of the day and maintaining them at the end of the day, regardless of who's selling the water, is, is important. If this, when they bring in an industry, which is something they will, it will happen, the industry, obviously, the housing will need to be in Alba and Winoka, obviously, and the majority of the, of the sales tax from the people moving here will be spent in Alba, some will be spent in Winoka. But that's going to be the impact to the city, but, and then the water sales, obviously. So, and we need to provide fire protection to the facility and that's why we put, there's fire hydrants along the proposed mains, along the highway and along Grady and Garvin. I don't, and, and Stan's been very instrumental in, you know, developing of the, the whole concept of, of the, of the project and I don't know if you want to put it in the chat center or do you have anything to offer? Well, I don't want to bore the group, but this has been a way, a long, a long ways in the planning process. Our board, a couple of years ago, went through a training process that was basically, when you go to recruit companies today, it's a different deal than it was a few years ago. Where the handshake and taking them out for supper and drinks and those kinds of things, it doesn't get it done. The companies go through commerce now, they want a project that is what they call site-ready and that means you've got to have water, electricity, all the amenities you've got to have, and you've got to have a labor force. So we're trying to be proactive in this, work with you all on this project, but it'll be beneficial for, when you start looking at an area of employment, we're not talking about just Alba or just Winoka, you've got Cherokee there to the east, Freedom to the west, you could have people driving from Woodward, Fairview up here, depends on the company and the quality of jobs will obviously.
And the quality of jobs will obviously come into play on those things. So this is what it's all about, is trying to create jobs, to create commerce for the area. And I'm not talking just one town, I'm talking the county and surrounding counties. Think that if you went and checked in Woodward and places like that, you'd be surprised how far some of those people drive in for those jobs. And there's no reason why this area can't have a site like this. This, this property right here, this is 160 acres here. Here's, here's the other 160 acres. To me, you know, this used to be the Lee Haley property in North Elton. And we still have 400 acres of property at Avar for the rail park, but we felt like we needed to take a step further. We were able to get this money. I want to commend Jeremy Zeller for his work on this. We actually have $20 million that we'll be injecting into this project and the Avar Rail Park that is on Garvin Road, about six miles to the west. So it all ties together, and we need to have that access of quality water, you know, on demand. We can't recruit a company to come in here to this area unless, you know, we're, we can tell them, hey, we've got capabilities of 500,000 gallons per day. And the well field was the first target that we looked at to, to beef the system up. This will also, one of the positive spinoffs, will help the rural water district, because they've had situations over the years where the water supplies went down because wells had went down or other issues. So you're gonna, they'll be a benefactor of this. It's a, it's a win-win deal for the whole area. Please entertain any questions. We don't have all the answers by any stretch, but Bill's been instrumental. We had to propose this, and I'd never bet Bill. And have real joy in working with him on this project. And we got the funding, you know, patcher congressmen, senators, I'm talking about local congressmen, senators on the back, because they all came into play. And they recognized at the Capitol that we need to do things to help the rural areas. That's how we, we have prep funds of about $5 million, and then we have $15 million of ARPA money. So that is just unbelievable to be able to inject it. Bill's worked all over the state, and I think he can explain that to you. But if you have any questions you'd like to ask me, I'm available this evening, available anytime you want to call or talk about these projects.
I'll just echo everything Stan just said. This, this is good for Alba, this is good for Woods County, this is good for people around us. If we can create opportunities and we can do it with funds that have been, you know, they, they were going to get spent somewhere. And, and so these are funds that we are fortunate to have the authority to have access to and be able to, to apply to our infrastructure and, and increase our capacity. That, I mean, there's, this is just, it's good stuff, so. I, we can discuss this, we can ask questions, whatever we need to do. At the end of the day, I'm going to ask somebody to make a motion to approve. But let's go ahead while we've got our experts here asking questions.
I do have a couple of questions. One, is there industries that would be concerned to go into a location not close to a lagoon?
Well, not really, there's, Bill could answer this question, but if we don't have this lagoon, Joe, we'll get no industry.
Yeah, okay.
Because out here, we're not, the days of putting a septic system are gone. And so we have capabilities, we're actually talking about even to expand it someday. That's maybe dreaming, but that's, we have those capabilities. I, I, this is a well thought-out plan where we're not going to be landlocked in this property. And these, we, we're recommended in this day and age to, to not divide this section. I know you're in the real estate business and you want these little lots and all this stuff. They, you just don't know who's going to kind of what. Somebody may want this whole 160, and we have other, other, you know, lots or acreage on the other side.
So are you selling those lots off then, or are they just going?
We will entertain, depends on what the company's needs. We've been coached, if you will, that we need to sell. In our Avar Rail project, we basically, because of the size of that thing and the way the rail was so critical to each location, we really didn't want to sell those lots. But to get the right companies in, you're probably going to have to sell.
And now, is there any information about, I mean, 500,000 gallons a day sounds like a lot. Is there any way that, say, we get this, I'm all for development, all for industry. I think we need it, I appreciate all the time you put into this. Is there any way that this is going to cause concern 30, 40, 50 years down the road of having enough water to serve the citizens of Alba? Because at the end of the day, that is the most important thing, is that our citizens have water. Do we have any concern as far as well levels?
We've still got water rights that we haven't touched yet, so I mean, we're.
So there's no, from, you have no concern higher, not, not first time?
One thing I might add, over time, your population has, I want to say, it's diminished from where it was in the 50s. So the, you've had peak demands 30, 40 years ago that were higher than what we're seeing now. And, and we did it with the wells that we had. So this is bringing back six to maybe, if we, if, if the money is there, you know, maybe we can end up with 12 wells if there's enough funds available. We're going to do alternate bids on additional wells. But you have the infrastructure, or the water rights are there, and we have not seen a diminishing of the overall static water levels.
Okay, perfect.
So we do that coupled with, with what we're doing here. I mean, our hopes are your population stays, and this will help potentially maintain population, you know? So I, it's not, your system has done it before.
Okay.
And we, we believe it can, it can maintain that, that capability.
And as far as the lagoons, I think you can, they built that as a fact of a lagoon, but you can put an aeration fountain in there, so there won't be a stench or a, or, you know, something sort of like that. That can be added later in time.
So what we're, like right now, you know, let's have to address as far as the industry that comes. We, like he was saying, we can expand it if someone comes and they do have a process that actually disrupts that as well, then we would expand the sewer system to deal with that industry at that time.
If nothing happens out here, we've got six new wells, though.
Sounds like a win-win. I mean, hopefully it's full.
It is.
And I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody in Woods County. I, again, I appreciate all the, the time and hard work you've all put into this project over many years, so.
Well, let me comment too, Joe, on, on this deal as far as, we'll be cautious on companies that are just coming out here that would need a tremendous, that would push it right up to the limit right off the bat. That's not going to be a practical deal for the next thing. And we, we would like to have, you know, companies, 10 to 15 to 20 people come in because of homes and schools and all the infrastructure, and then work slowly up that way. May not, who knows how it happened. We'll entertain, you know, all those things as we go along. But we'll, we'll be good conservers of the money. That's, people on this board are, quite frankly, they're all ag-related. They understand, you know, when the windmill goes dry, they know what that means.
Bill, I had a question I meant to send you, but I got caught up in court. Why is the city needing to execute the application for the construction permit?
Why do they need to?
Why does the city need to when it's the Avar Rail Authority?
That's a, that is a good question. So the Avar Rail Trust Regional Park Authority does not have the staff to maintain and operate the water system. The city of, of Alba has the staff to, and the operators to maintain it. That, that's why. So the DEQ will only issue a construction permit to an entity that has what they call a PWSID number. So you're a public water spot, so that's why, so.
And the wells are ours.
The wells are yours, yeah. I moved to ask that female back and forth the other day after your opportunity.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing the mayor or city manager to execute an application for a construction permit to ODEQ for the construction of water mains and sanitary sewer mains with lagoons and Avar Rail Trust Authority. Industrial park located in the east one half of section 23, T26, and R14, WI.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Parsons, to authorize the mayor or manager to execute an application for a construction permit to DEQ as per item six and the utility authority committee. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yep.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go back to item five. Discussion and action to approve recommended ground storage tank project bid, alternate bid number one, from DN Tanks in the amount of $1,562,000. This is a, originally, we had looked at a smaller tank for more money, and we're about the same money. And this, this, the bids came in competitive. Bill, I'll let you.
No, that's good, Kelly. We originally were looking at 500,000 gallon tank, and then we started thinking, well, you know what? Let's swings with the fences, so we did. So we put an alternate bid in for a 750,000 gallon tank. We also went ahead and looked at steel tanks, so like a, your normal welded steel tank, like the one at Young's Boulevard and Thunderbird. We have a, we have a pre-stressed concrete tank, and we have a steel tank there. So I thought, you know, maybe the steel tank would be more cost-effective, but it turned out that the pre-stressed concrete is, is obviously more cost-effective, and we can afford, under our budget, for, that we had, so in our original estimate. So we can do the 750, and that's just going to be a better situation for, for everybody. So we're recommending that you award that, the, for the alternate bid, excuse me, for the alternate bid for the 750,000 gallon tank to DN Tanks. DN Tanks built the tank at Young's at Thunderbird, the, the pre-stressed concrete tank. It was, they were subcontracted to win construction, and this one they're applying. So they, I'll, I'll probably do all the work themselves, because there's not a lot of piping on this one, so. That's our recommendation. I think it'd be, we'll be well-suited doing the pre-stressed concrete.
Again, this is part of our FAP loan with OWRB. The, this was part of our application for that loan funding, was to be able to do this tank. So the OWRB is expecting us to perform this project since they loaned us the money. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve ground storage tank project bid, alternate bid number one, from DN Tanks in the amount of $1,562,000.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve the ground storage tank project bid, alternate number one from DN Tanks in the amount of $1,562,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Kelly, so your decision to move forward with this tank is really almost generational in one sense, because the, the tank that we're going to demo was installed circa 1942, during the war, 1942, 1943. So, you know, got a few years of, out of that tank. I, it's, it's time, but so, y'all take good care of stuff, and that's why it lasted, so. It's time, and again, it's a big deal. I'm proud you guys are going to.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Do you have anything you want to share?
All right.
He's moved to Alba part-time.
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to go to Bill, unless you have something else.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you, Stan.
Yes, thank you very much.
Item three, discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, August 19th, 2024. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $340,234.45 and payroll expenses of $58,140.79. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve the consent. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right. Item seven is new business, and we don't have anything qualified there, so we will adjourn the utility authority meeting. And call the order, the regular Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
I'm here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 19th, 2024. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $355,373.6 and payroll expenses of $20,214.26. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Hoffman, a second by Mrs. Swallow, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to approve the semi-commercial builders' change order number two, extending the contract for the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center by 115 days, creating a new contract, end date of May 1, 2024. This is.
That's the title, it's 2025.
2025, that is, but I can read sometimes. This is, this has become necessary due to the amount of time that has passed as we await the Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation to sign off on the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant that we've been tentatively awarded. And so, being that we don't have the funds in hand, we cannot start the bathhouse portion of the project. The bathhouse portion of the project is why the contract days are being sought for extension. And that, that's that.
So this won't increase the cost any?
No, there, if, if the costs are going to increase, those will be additional change orders.
And this is a change order that we have requested, not them, is that correct?
No, they've requested it. We, we exceeded the amount, because we haven't allowed them to start on the bathhouse. We've exceeded the amount of time that, that they can complete the bathhouse.
But so, but it, it's not their, I mean, looking at the contract, it's not, if the, the contract between us and them.
They're not at fault.
They're not at fault, that's what I'm trying to ask.
They are not at fault. They have to request the extension, but it's not because of anything that they've done.
But
Since we've, since we've approved bids now, it's all
We're currently on budget for what was
What's, okay.
How much of the pool I've seen that's been paid for by donations?
Donations are going, grants and donations are going to cover all the 1.6 million. And out of, I think, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I figured all the amenities were 6.1.
So Parks and Recreation at one time talked about we're doing, not doing the water cannons.
Right, those were deducted. That was one of the change orders.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep. This will not affect general funding.
So if this wasn't approved, say, we said we're not going to approve it, we can decide to dive in board later. It, we wouldn't be able to, because it wouldn't be set up. So this is, it has to be done now if we ever want to have a diving board.
If we ever want to have a diving board, the foundation work has to be done. We don't have to purchase the diving board right now.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order Number Four in the amount of $35,353.95.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order Number Four, in the amount of $35,353.95. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Lars?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right.
Item number seven is new business. We don't have anything that qualifies as new business. Item 8 is adjourned.